Okay.
Greetings, folks. This is Brian Harris with the Independent Black Voters on Facebook. Our vote is not free. We've done over fifty interviews now, and we plan to do another hundred before the general election. Why? Because we must be educated voters. Why? Because we must get to know the candidates. We need to understand their values, their beliefs, and what they will do to bring social and economic justice to everyone, especially those in need, the black community. I'm here, and I'm proud to have Jeff Profit here, who is running for school board. You said District B, right?
Yes.
District B, which is the Summerlin area, right?
It is the North Las Vegas. It does branch into all of North Las Vegas, all of Sunrise Mountain, and then it branches all the way out to the border in Mesquite and Moapa Valley.
Wow, that's a big area.
Yep.
So what I'm gonna ask you to do, Jeff, is introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about you. Tell us a little bit about the position and why you are running for school board.
Okay. My, you know, I'll try and give it to you in a condensed version. I'm forty-six years old and soon to be sixty years old, it seems like, going quite fast. Married for twenty-four of those years. I have three children, all of which have either graduated from CCSD schools. Me and my wife are both educated at CCSD schools, went on, graduated, and did our college education and our careers right here in District B. My son now is seventeen years old. He's six foot four, two hundred and forty pounds, tied in with a recently pinned offer from a college to go play football. Real proud of that. My daughter is now an entrepreneur. She owns her own business, and she's doing real well, and she's gonna go back to college for business now that she's done that. So she has an avenue to pay for college, and I'm proud of her for that. And then I have our little oops, our seventy-year-old is a, he's in third grade, and he's our, he's great. But I was born and raised in District B. My dad was a Baptist minister at a little church called Gateway Baptist Church of Lakeview and Lamb Boulevard. So I know the area that we're in, that's where the city, even though I, right now currently, I live in Moapa Valley, about a hundred miles outside of town. I do all my business still in Las Vegas. And I, you know, I started in the trade because my, entered the trades because my dad funneled me that way. He saw what, you know, what I was capable of, and I really could not sit in a college classroom when I was nineteen years old. So he got me in the trades, got me working with construction, and then I went back and through my trades, I got to work in the field. I became a kitchen contractor, worked with kitchen contractors, built a lot of the fancy kitchens in town, and I loved it. But I knew that when I got the call to go over and be a trainer, be an instructor in our trade school, our apprenticeship program, I got under the mantra of CSN and became a CSN instructor, went back and got my college degree, and that's where my heart has been. And we've been working with CSN for a long time through our apprenticeship program to try and get the trades more focused with the trade CTE programs, magnet programs. And I just felt that we always got to a certain point, and then it kind of died. And the only way that I think that I can truly make a change and make a focus for our kids in the CTE magnet programs and all of the things that are available in Clark County for a young person to do without going full college and make a good career out of it, I think I need to, you know, I just felt like being a trustee would get us there and get us there faster.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the introduction. Right now, obviously, Clark County is in trying times, just like the nation. We were already close to last, and now with the COVID-19 coronavirus, COVID-19 coronavirus, we have even more challenges. Tell me what you think are the biggest challenges for Clark County schools at this time?
I think the obvious question of that is funding, but I really do believe that we need to have smart funding. It's, I think a lot of the times we've gone up to the legislature and said, "We need money." And they ask a very simple question, "Why?" And this, and you know, the school district just couldn't answer that. So I think before we address that our funding issues, that we find out where every dime is going and where, you know, why it's going there. We need to work smarter, not harder, and I think we could do that with a lot of things. We've seen, you know, and just recently, in the last couple of weeks, that there was a, you know, a pretty good surplus within the school district that nobody knew about, and they were trying to grab it back for central office. So what are those funds being used for? What are they being, I have nothing against a principal saving money. That's, that's, that's the good, that's good. But why are we saving money, and if there's a reason behind it? So, you know, that's the obvious question. But I think that we, you know, before we start picking on CCSD and how bad we are, I think we need to accentuate what CCSD does positively. And I do believe when it comes to CTE and magnet programs, there's some positivity there. I think where the downfall is, is there's no, the opportunity for those programs aren't to all students. They're to some select crowds, and we do good things in pockets, but we don't do good things across for everybody. And that's where we need to, we need to focus in on and spread that, spread what we're doing well to everybody.
Let me tell you something that's funny. I'm not surprised there's a surplus. Let me explain to you why. I've spent some time in the school system, so I'm a little bit, I'm just, no, a little bit. But my background is engineering and numbers. You have a area that, you have a school system that is, does not have the amount of teachers that they need. Many of those teachers have been supplemented with what they call guest with substitute teachers. So if you're going to pay X amount of dollars for teachers and you have X amount of substitute teachers or guest teachers in place, if you really did your budget right, you should have a significant amount of savings. And unfortunately, I can tell you this, without having to pay me as a consultant, there's a direct correlation between surplus and underperforming schools. Because those are the ones that have a high amount of guest teachers. And guess what? There's a direct correlation between poverty and low-performing schools. The problem I have with Clark County school system is we have two different schools. You're exactly right. I moved to Henderson. We have a pretty good system out here.
Yeah.
We're the haves, but when you go into places, other areas, they're the have-nots. They don't have the Chromebooks. They don't have the teachers that are there. That's where the surplus is, is with the places where they don't have the teachers, which have the worst performance. It's a direct correlation. You don't have to pay me as a consultant to not figure this out.
Right.
One of the things that you said that was very important to me is nowadays skilled trades is a new direction to go versus everybody going to school. Because it seems like right now, school, and I understand, I have an MBA from Purdue University. I'm undergrad in electrical engineering technology. I don't knock school, but I've learned to appreciate skilled trades. Because if you are not that person that should go to school, then we should be in high school and possibly junior high school teaching these people how to work with their hands and how to be good citizens through skilled trades. Because especially in some of the underperforming areas, if we basically focus the curriculum on what is, what will keep their attention and make them become viable adults, that's way more better than more testing.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, and I wanna, I wanna piggyback off of a few things that you said there. Is that when we talk about the skilled trades, I think we've all, you know, and I am that guy. So I think our messaging has been wrong, starting with the counselors and when we do job fairs and things like that. You know, they put all the colleges and up against one wall, and then they say, "Oh, here are these other guys in the back." And when they start going around and you start doing a little comparison, it's like, hold on a second. These guys over here are college. You're gonna get college credits, and we're gonna, you know, through our program, you have the opportunity to have your, to get your associate's degree through CSN completely paid for. And then we want you, we wanna push you to go further. And when you talk about no debt, you talk about you're gonna work, you know, we promise that you're gonna have the opportunity to work. Your reputation is what you make of it, and we're gonna give you the opportunity when you get out there. But your work ethic and your skills like that, that's gonna be your calling card going forward. And we teach those guys when they first come in about their reputation and working hard and showing up eight-for-eight. And but going back to what you were talking about a little bit further, you talk about, I would, I would compare what I, you know, my experience here in Moapa. We're a relatively low-income community, but we're a five-star rated school. So what is the difference is there is that, you know, we had, for the last fourteen years, we've had a teacher cut from our, from our high school. Same thing with our middle schools and our elementary schools, but the community supports. The community always makes up something and gets involved with the community. But so translate that to the lower-income schools that are in Las Vegas. That's where I believe that we, if we partnered more with the community and made the schools look like the community, we'd have more, you know, whatever word that you wanna put in there, equitable, equity, you know, what, if you made the schools look like the community, like ours does out here, that you're gonna have more success. And that's what it used to be, and what's sad, you know, and I also, I'm a big sports guy. When I went to high school, I went to El Dorado High School in nineteen ninety-two when I graduated, and when you played another school, both stands were full. Now it's not like that. It kind of shocks me when we travel into town and we see, you know, our side of the stands are pretty full because we still do the Friday night lights here. Town shuts down for Friday night, but you look on the other stands and you look, you know, there's not a lot of support from the community for that football team or the volleyball team. The community isn't supportive as they used to be when I was in high school. And I think that's a big issue that we've got to solve, is getting the community involved.
And you know what? You hit on a couple of key issues, and I love to see somebody that's headed in the right direction, the right direction. You are correct that the schools make up. Understand, I'm originally from Gary, Indiana. I graduated from Gary Roosevelt. The school that I went to was predominantly black. A high degree of folks went to college when I was there. I graduated from Purdue University. I went back and got my MBA from Purdue University. But in high school, and actually junior high school and elementary, many of the teachers looked like me. We knew they lived in my community. And that's a key. They lived in my community, so they were concerned about the community. They didn't live, they didn't live somewhere else.
Yep.
And that's a key issue. And so those are some of the issues that you talk about. We have to look at what we're going on. The principals look like me. We have, we have as big as this place, we have three, I think it is, or four principals in the high schools, and very little of our administration looks like me. That's systemic racism.
That's right.
And we have to address the root cause and stop looking at the Band-Aids on what's going on. And that's where we need to have the right people in the school boards, I believe, to do that. Because one of the things I'm gonna ask you, obviously, if you're in there to serve your district, I'm kind of like looking at it just as, it may be there to serve your district, but you should be there to serve all of the kids.
Yep.
And you can't be not concerned because your area is performing that other areas are not performing. Just as you said, it's, it's a different type of issue in a rural area when you look at poverty than it is in an urban area when you look at poverty.
Yep.
But still, poverty is a direct correlation between performance overall and performance in school. Poverty, there's a link between poverty and low performance, and we have to figure out how to deal with that. Which brings me to another issue that is usually not talked about in the school with the trustees, but they have a major issue on this. I'm a big believer again that we have to change the way we're thinking with what's going on here today. And I'm gonna ask your opinion on that. But one of the things that I look at is the schools are not just education, they're big business. They're billion-dollar industries.
Right.
When you start to look at their procurement, when you start to look at when they build schools, the black community is roughly thirteen percent of Clark County. But when you look at the dollars they come through, that literally come through, what, taxing?
Yeah.
And they recycle back to the community to build schools? They come back to the community for procurement, even if it's napkins, if it's toilet paper, if it's books, et cetera. Without being a consultant and doing any look, I can tell you that black businesses get less than probably one percent of the dollars that flow through procurement, through building of schools, maintaining of schools, et cetera. You will never have a strong, you'll never fix the educational issues if you don't fix the economic issues. So I need to have a board, and I'm talking to every board that, number one, realizes that there is a problem there and is committed in many ways to help to smash systemic racism by addressing the real root problems of wealth inequality because they're being locked out. The good old boy system is alive in a well.
Yeah.
And if you, if you create a business, but you are locked out from the opportunity to win businesses, then you have no business.
Right.
So give me your thoughts on that, on what I just said and what you think.
Well, I tell you, you know, just as a, as a whole, I do know that the maintenance and construction department, they, they are leery of me being on this board. I've done, I've dealt with CCSD construction for a lot of years, and transparency is, and that's a joke. That's a joke word, because there is no transparency whatsoever. And like I talked to you before, what I would love to see, and I'm gonna be an advocate for it, is that I think that there needs to be a project labor agreement on those jobs that says you're going to have so many minority contractors, you're gonna have so many apprentices on that job that reverts that money back into the economy and gives people upward mobility to raise their bootstraps or whatever, you know, cliche that they wanna come up with these days. But to give somebody a middle-class lifestyle that they can sustain from, you know, high school to retirement through the whole system, but not just talk about it like we have seen on some big jobs, it needs to be enforced. There was a bill that came out in two thousand and fifteen that struck down all that kind of stuff that we did, and we called it the Full Utah Employment Act, is because that's exactly what it did. I, you know, during a time when my members at sheet eighty-eight were hurting, when we had, you know, eighty percent unemployment, and I drove past Moapa Valley while they were building a high school, and there was nothing but Utah trucks there. That's, that, that makes your stomach roll. You know, first and foremost, I think that Nevada, Nevada-based contractors, Nevada-based suppliers, what you're talking about, toilet paper, food, all that kind of stuff, it needs to be bought in Nevada. But there needs to be a certain amount of, not, you know, we say minorities. We need to delegate, or we need to distinguish what the minorities are. You know, so much for women, so much for the black community, so much for the Latino community, and, you know, Pacific Islander too. Put it in there. And hold people accountable to do so. But this, I'll tell you, Brian, we, we, in the trades, I know, you know, I've got one of our members that sits on the bond oversight committee, and sometimes you turn over that rock, and you don't like what you see on that rock. And they're not building schools these days. They're building really nice schools. They look good, but they're not sustainable schools, and they're not saving this district money over a ten, we always go by decades. You know, they're saving money in the beginning, but that ten-year efficiency over that building is horrific because they choose to buy what is, you know, what I think the good old boy network wants to sell off and not, and not something that's gonna be productive over a certain amount of time and hold up over time. Be, you know, you gotta make those schools, you know, for lack of a better term, bulletproof, you know. It's just like a shopping center with shopping carts and stuff like that. Kids are, kids will put things to the test, doors, you know, everything, they slam them. But the efficiency of the building is gonna save money to the school district over a ten-year period, if you do it right. And that's when we, you know, and then I would like to talk about the apprenticeship programs and things like that because that's where my heart is at. If you have those things, apprentices become owners. Apprentices become owners. Every one of the owners that I deal with right now, I have forty different contractors. Every one of them, with the exception of a few, we got a few corporate guys, most of them came from the apprenticeship somewhere. They touched the tools and they, you know, they went back to school. They started with the tools, and then they said, "You know what? I like this," and then they got in the office a little bit. Upward mobility is what we need to give people and show them the way.
You know, like I said, I met you, Jeff, just recently. You called me earlier. We talked this morning, and we're zooming this evening. The more I know you, the more I like you. You're talking my message, and that's key because many people have their head in the sands, and they, they won't look at the true picture to come out. You're exactly right, because we know what diversity was. Well, I got this white guy who owns a big company. He goes and puts his daughter or his wife into business, and now they high-five diversity like they did in the stadium. And then they asked me to celebrate diversity while I'm continually to be locked out of opportunity.
Diversity, yeah, diversity doesn't mean that you have a black guy working for you. It means that the black guy owns the business, and that, you know, that's what, and that needs to be verified. That needs to be verified.
Hey, hey, I like what you say. Now, I'm gonna take you to this, the superintendent, the principals.
Yeah.
Their pay should be tied to their ability to smash the good old boy system. In other words, the principal, I mean, the superintendent, if all he brings in are people who look like him or look one standard, and is not effectively going out to make a administration and a school and actually teachers that look like the community, then they should be, it should affect their pay.
Yes, right.
The principals, they now have a lot of decision-making on buying. They're almost little fiefdoms. And if they are utilizing a good old boy system and you don't see a diversity in their, their utilization of their funds, they also should be hitting the pocketbook. Because when you hit people in the pocketbook, things happen. When you don't hit them, it's just, well, I tried, it didn't happen, oh, well.
Yeah, and as a trustee, you know, as a trustee, we have one employee, that's the superintendent. But what I always know about, you know, this is a political job, let's not, you know, sugarcoat it. In politics, it's who, you know, how you leverage things. And the way I look, you know, I always look, and that's not a bad word. That's not to say you're gonna, you know, gonna twerk, you know, get on him. But what I'm talking about with leverage is that he ultimately puts principals in place. You know, the SLTs, our school organizational teams, do have a say. They have an opinion, and that's what it is. They can put their opinion in, but ultimately, it's the superintendent. Now, the way he does it is he delegates it to his lower-level superintendents. And that's another thing that we need to talk about, is that those folks need to be reflective of the community too. You know, first and foremost, and have that worked out. But, you know, ultimately, he takes the advice of those, his lower-level superintendents of who goes into those spots. Having people in the spots of color, that's, you know, that's gonna start some of what you're talking about. Because they're gonna buy, they're not gonna have a problem following those rules. They're not gonna have a problem following those rules. But I don't think that it's a, it's a bad thing to leverage Dr. Jar and say, "Listen, man, this is part of, you know, this is part of the rules from now on."
Actually, this is part of your compensation.
We hire, that's right.
Compensation.
That's right. And we hire, we hire those so that they look like the communities that they're gonna represent in black and brown. And from there, you work down, and you just start, you start making those policies that he has to enforce. And I think that there's, there's a possibility, there's, there's not a possibility. I really do think with the school board that's gonna come in there, I think that this is gonna get done. And it's gonna be, you know, it's something that has been done in other districts, and it just seems like our district always is catching up to other districts, and I hate it. It's getting old.
You're right. Well, again, I love what you have to say. One of the things you can tell is passion, when somebody is just saying it because, oh, this is a platform to say it and lives it. So I can read the passion and the belief there with you. Again, we are starting to vet as many candidates as we can across the spectrum. We vetted over fifty Zoom calls, and we're starting to endorse candidates to help them win. We vetted multiple of the school boards. As a matter of fact, you were recommended through some of the people we talked earlier. Because I think there's strength and unity when you have a school board that has the same focus, and the focus being on the kids first and the realization of what is needed. Give me your opinion, because I had a talk with a state assembly person, and he's for school vouchers. He's for, he's for school vouchers. He's for almost defunding the schools that need it the most. Obviously, by allowing people to move and select schools, which I believe is a nightmare. Give me your opinion on this whole school choice where you can get vouchers for going to private schools, or vouchers for staying at home and teaching your kid, et cetera.
I think that's a two-part question, so I'm gonna answer the first one. That was with the current, the current structure that we have with charter schools, private schools in Nevada. I wanna, I wanna go on record as saying, I don't have any, you know, and the trustee really doesn't have a lot of power to do that, but I don't support undoing all that. I do, I do think that charter schools need to be regulated. They need to provide the same set of standards as the CCSD does or exceed them going forward. And we've got a couple of knuckleheads among us that need to straighten up, and they put profits over kids. That's, you know, that's where I draw the line. If you're gonna be a true charter school, and you're gonna, you're gonna conduct your business, you're gonna follow the rules, and you're going to allow diverse people to come into your school through, you know, what do they call that, the lottery picks? You know, if that's a true open that everybody gets to go for, I'll support you. But if you're picking and choosing, you know, the, you know, quote-unquote, "the smart kids" so that your, your numbers look better and all that kind of stuff, I'm out. And if you're, if you're doing it for profits over kids, that's not where, you know, that, go be a private school. That's what private schools, you know, Christian schools, things like that, you know, more power to you. But then we go to the second part of that in vouchers. And vouchers has proven itself over the, you know, from coast to coast to, that, all that does is choose the haves and the have-nots. That's all that does. That, that creates, you know, that tears down diversity. That tears down the fabric of neighborhoods where you've got a kid that says, you know, well, my mom and dad, or, you know, they, they've got enough money, I don't have to go to that school no more. The best thing we can do is make that school that's in that neighborhood better, and don't take those public dollars. That's not, I'm just not supportive of that at all.
Jeff, we're online again. I like what you have to say. Here's the deal, Jeff. I just met you, I've talked to you before this, I vetted you before, I've talked to you now. I like what you have to say so far. As a matter of fact, I'm going to go on a limb, because I don't do this with every person. The Independent Black Voters are going to support you and help you win. We need people who understand what's going on. We need people who have clear minds that we can, cannot victim blame.
That's right.
We have kids who want to learn. They just don't have a real, true, fair, level playing field to learn. We have to think of how to save all the kids, not just some of the kids. We have to, we have to spend our dollars wisely, because, you know, my kids are grown. And while I believe that we should have a good school system, I'm not into throwing away my tax dollars.
Yeah, right.
So I'm gonna go here and say, from the things I've had, from the vetting I did before you, we'd like to see you win, and we're gonna go out our way to help you win. So.
That's awesome.
We're gonna give you this in this call, and we're gonna have you talk about yourself, this, and some other issues going forward. Because the community needs to... Because the community needs to get to know you. Community needs to know you so they can help you win. Uh, tell me, this is your uh time to give people your contact information. And give them your quick spill on why you should be the candidate of choice for a school board.
Okay, first I'll give you my uh, you know, I'll give you my cell phone number. Let's begin with that. My, my cell phone number is seven oh two. Two, three, nine, nine, one, eight, four. And I, you know, with, with the way my schedule is, it's best if you text me. I can always answer a text when I'm in, you know, all the meetings that I've gotta be in, but feel free to call, leave a message. I'll get back with you. Uh, my uh, my email address is info at profit, P R O F F I T T. The number four, profitforeducation.com. And that is also my website, profitforeducation.com. And we're starting a new campaign next week. And this is a campaign that I really, I want my, the next two months to be about. Is that uh, I, I, I've got an opponent that is very, very negative. Uh, on she, she, she likes to run a negative campaign and I'm gonna do the exact opposite. We're gonna be positive. And I wanna, uh, there's gonna be a place on there that you click on and you can put on your story about what CCSD has done for you, for your kids. If it's a teacher that was able to change a life, an administrator that was able to change a life of some sort. I wanna hear that story and we wanna promote those stories over the next two months to show what we can do if we do everything right. If we can put the heart uh into motion and put things into place. Um, I'll tell you, Brian, my, my background is diversity. I grew up in. Uh, I grew up on Sunrise Mountain, Elverado High School. Um, that is, you know, we. For lack of a term, not to get too emotional, I, I saw one of my best friends that I grew up with shot. Uh, my sophomore, junior year, uh, first day of school. Uh, and I, I grew up in some, some tough, some tough times. Uh, so I know that we can get past these times, uh, because we made it, we, you made it through those. Um, I saw a lot of my friends have tough times uh through their lifetimes and I've seen some people overcome a lot of really big things. And they could do that and I'm proud of them. Uh, my, my background, like I said, I'm the son of a Baptist minister. Uh, diversity was his thing. And it is fun to see, you know, even though he's passed on, it seemed to see some of the uh, the other pastors around that he was, that, that were friends with him. Uh, support me in this campaign and I love it. Um, I, I, I'm, you know, pretty humbled by it. That he, you know, his legacy's still around me. But I grew up in a church where everybody was, you know. My, you know, my dad was a choir director, so uh, he, he never told anybody they couldn't sing in the choir. Even if they couldn't sing a lick, he, he, he wanted you in the choir and by the end of the, you know, by the time he was done with you, everybody sounded great. And it was a, it was a gift that he, you know, that he had. But that was the, that was the home I grew up in and I'm proud of it. And that's the, that's what we need in our community. We need a little bit less. Of the uh, the made-up garbage that is coming out of, you know, certain people in politics. And we need to get back to where even if we don't just, you know, and that's one thing I wanna say about our current board. I'm looking forward to coming in there with a new set of people and we can argue. Uh, I, I even, with all the candidates, I know all of them. Uh, I, I'm comfortable that I can argue with them and still love them. If you, 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 it ain't personal. Uh, everybody's got their opinion. But there's, there's a severe lack of, of not just respect, but there's a, there's a lack of love on that board uh amongst each other that they can't. Talk to each other without, uh, you know, disrespect and that's, that, that's not productive going forward and I, you have my commitment that that's gonna change. Um, but you know, without uh taking up too much of your time, I would love to come back and talk about any issue that you want, Brian. I, I love this format. I love you guys' uh, your feelings on things and I wanna hear what you have to say.
Outstanding. Can you still see me? Cuz my phone, my, my uh, my thing went blank.
Your uh, your picture is frozen, but I can still hear you.
Okay, good. Well, hopefully uh my picture will be on there. We will definitely continue this uh conversation. Once I get this done. Uh, I'm gonna call you after this. Uh, we're gonna end this. I, I'm gonna call you real quick afterwards. But again, this is the Independent Black Voters on Facebook. Our, our voice is not free. We must find candidates like uh Mr. Prophet here so that we. And ships and we will have people that are like-minded. The world is changing, folks. It's not us against them. It's us against what is wrong. It's us against white supremacy. It's us against sys- systemic racism. It's us against poverty. It's us against the evils of the world. So I thank you, Jeff. And I look forward to talking to you and getting to know you even more. We vote, we, we endorsed you. We will now go out and help you win. So I'm gonna sign off now and call you in a minute and hope like heck that everything went okay. All right?
Good deal. Thank you and I appreciate all your time.
Thanks.